Good evening, welcome to the Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday evening, November 7th, 2017. The first item of business is the approval of the Board's last meeting on October 24th.
We approve the minutes of October 24th, 2017.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, I'm running to get my pad. I will be back. Okay.
Next item on the agenda, the Board has allotted five minutes for public comment. No one wishes to be heard. Whoops. Mrs. Salisbury, could you please come up to the podium? Some of you who maybe haven't been here since we've redecorated a little bit. We have a podium and a microphone up there, and we'd ask you to please go up there.
Okay.
Give your name and address, and please direct comments to the Board.
My name is Kathryn Salisbury, 10 Ridgewood Crossing. I am here to with two quick comments, one about the Aquarian water decision, and the other one about the marijuana retail stores issue. On the water company, my comments, nothing new. I'm repeating what I have said before, so I'll be brief. I know you're familiar with them. The decision, I would urge you not to appeal it, not to spend any more public dollars. I don't think the Supreme Judicial Court is about to reverse to lower courts. Secondly, the dollar amount means, in my opinion, although you probably will refer it to your Water Acquisition Study Committee for, to run the numbers, but at that price, I don't think it's any way you can make rates, water rates, cheaper than what we already are paying. And as I remember, the last report of the Water Acquisition Study Committee was that at $50 million, you could make the rates cheaper. So that's another reason why I think we should not buy the water company. The other reason, the same reasons expressed before on town meeting floor, are the fact that the goals of either one being our self-sufficient, with our own water supply, are illusory goals. We will never be alone with that. We have Hull and Cohasset that are going to be together with us in the Regional Water District, and that means that we'll be paying all the money, and they will get a seat on the Board, so to speak, and be able to make decisions about basically our water. So I'm very, very much against both appealing the decision and acquiring the company at this price. Second, the marijuana, I understand Planning Board is having hearings, public hearings downstairs tonight, again, on the regulations that they are proposing. Be that as it may, I think that it is incumbent upon you, the Board of Selectmen, and if you fail to do it, then a 10-person citizen petition should be put forth, to put before the 2018 town meeting an article asking residents of the town, do you want to ban retail stores that sell recreational marijuana? It is something by statute you can do, and I think it should be put to the voters. If it turns out, they say, no, we do not want to ban it, the Planning Board has regulations at the ready, and I presume they will continue through their public hearing process and the Advisory Committee, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and they will have their article also on the town meeting warrant. There'll be two of them. One is the ban, and the second, and the alternative, if no ban, then let's regulate, let's regulate retail stores. So I would urge you to put an article, and, thank you.
Thank you for both your comments. I would just mention that in the Selectmen reports, I have a statement that is being read to the Planning Board this evening.
Good.
That is discussing the process. If you're here, you're welcome to have a copy. I'd be happy to email a copy. The interim Town Administrator and I have talked about putting that very subject on our next meeting agenda, which is December 21st. I think it would be inappropriate of the Board to comment any further on either of these, because we haven't posted these topics this evening, but I'm happy to give you a copy of the statement.
But it's public comment time.
Absolutely. No, so thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening to the Board.
Good evening.
My name is James Connolly. I live at 37 Elton Street, and have for nearly the last 30 years, so I've been a customer of the water company all that time. I think you've had a good airing of the issue of the merits, and also the costs of takeover, and I think the authoritative judgment by both the trial court and the appeals court makes it pretty clear that the value of Hingham Water Company, subject to any appeal you may take to the SJC, is much higher than the town and the town meeting and the Board probably ever suspected, or might have been led to believe was feasible, by almost twice as much. There's a concept in economics of sunk costs. You've spent a lot of money, authorized the expenditure of a lot of money for pursuing this court case. I think it's time to leave the sunk costs behind, and not throw further money after it, especially when one considers what could be used, what that money might be used for, you know, fire, police, special needs education, uniforms for the school, and whatever it might be, rather than fattening the purse of appellate counsel. I think it's time to accept the outcome, because I think it's highly unlikely that the SJC is going to find grounds to appeal, or to overturn, rather, the two courts below. I think it's wise to abandon this acquisition effort. It's had a good airing, but water customers will probably not benefit from an acquisition, certainly not at this price, nor will taxpayers benefit from being burdened with whatever bond issue or indebtedness is involved in defraying the cost of $100 million acquisition. And the lady who spoke before me spoke of relations with Hull. Currently, the DPU stands between you and Hull as the sort of arbiter, as well as the water company. I don't know that you really want to be mediating directly, or without mediation, dealing directly with Hull in the matter. On a personal note, I've known this water company for about 30 years or more. I used to be the General Counsel, and then I was the Chairman of the State DPU. I've done numerous water cases, rate cases with the company, and was involved in the legal opinion that allowed them to finance the water treatment plant. No company's perfect. All companies have to be monitored and watched, but my impression in that capacity over many rate cases of this company is that it's a reasonably well-run company, and its rates once adjudicated by the DPU, now with the intervention of the Attorney General's Office, which didn't use to be able to intervene in water company cases. The service quality is reasonably good, certainly better than when I came here, when they had a lot of the problems with manganese and iron staining clothes in the wash. And I think a further consideration you may want to have is that Aquarian is apparently the likely target of a takeover or a merger acquisition proposition from Eversource, the large Massachusetts and Connecticut company. It's a company with, I think, a deserved reputation for quality of service and concern for customer care. As a parent company, if the acquisition does go forward, it has large resources to back up obligations to customers and to the communities that the water arm would serve, including Hingham. I think you've allowed this issue to be explored very thoroughly, and I now, I think, the time has come to conclude that it really has played itself out, and it's time, I think, to retire this acquisition effort, rather than, you know, send good money off to bad trying to recoup these sunk costs of litigation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay. Yes, sir.
I'm Greg Lane. I live at 14 Rice Road. I'm here to extend an invitation on behalf of the Weir River Waterside Association. They're having their annual meeting on November 15th at 7:00 o'clock over at the Estuary Committee off of George Washington Boulevard, and the key topic is water supply, an issue of interest to you folks. So they asked me to come here on their behalf and extend an invitation to the Board of Selectmen and the community.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on. We have a public hearing with the 99 Restaurant and Pub, a request for a one-day entertainment license. It's Kevin, right? Could you come on up to the table, please? How's your construction going?
It's going very well.
Good. So Kevin, you're here for a one-day license for the grand opening?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and this is for December 12th of 2017?
January 11th.
January 11th.
January 11th.
The grand opening.
Beg your pardon.
That's the big party night.
January 11th. And question, Tom, I don't know if this is for you, but to the extent that this is approved tonight, and there's any change in the timing, does this allow for a change in date, or would you need to come back?
So there was some discussion, there was some discussion today about allowing it to be on or around January 11th. My concern with that was, how do you define around?
Yes.
So I think that there's a pretty good chance that the 99 is going to know within two or three weeks of the date of this event, that it's a definitive date, and that gives us time to put it on an agenda if it needs to change.
Okay.
So for now, you'll have a date, and if it changes, chances are we'll know a couple of weeks in advance. You let us know, will it be back on the Board's agenda, and they can change it.
Absolutely.
Pollard, Karen, any questions?
Yeah, so I guess I, it seemed like maybe we should approve this contingent on, the chief's not here tonight, a traffic plan with the chief, so, you know, maybe modify the vote language to suggest that, you know, one week prior to the schedule of the event, you check in with the chief to make sure that, I think he had some concerns as to whether you were going to need a detail or a different traffic, parking plan, or whatever. So maybe I can just sort of fudge that and add it into the, I don't see him here tonight, because otherwise you'd be able to maybe bring some clarity to that. And so let me ask this too, if we approve this, and if you're willing to entertain the amended language to make it subject to consultation with the Chief of Police one week prior to the scheduled event date, or something like that, if we have to move the date, does he necessarily have to come back, or can we just vote to move the date?
If you move the date, he would.
Okay.
But not for this, not for this contingency.
But if we change the date, he's got to come back?
Change the date, you've got to come back.
So we can't just vote it? He has to appear?
That's right.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Questions from the public on this? Okay. Would Karen O'Pao like to make a motion?
Want me to do it, since I?
Please.
All right. Okay. Let's see. I vote that we approve the request of the 99 Restaurants of Boston DBA, 99 Restaurants and Pub, for a one-day entertainment license for the grand opening event to be held on January 11, 2018, from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m., contingent upon 99 Restaurants and Pub, consulting with the Hingham Chief of Police one week prior to the event in respect of traffic and police details.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I trust our invitations will be in the mail.
I will hand-deliver them myself.
You know, maybe when you come back, you can bring them with you.
Absolutely.
We hope that Mother Nature is kind to us over the next several weeks, so that your project can stay on schedule. I know you're anxious to do that, and I know that you had employees who you've relocated into your, into your other stores, so those folks can stay working, which is terrific, but I'm sure everybody's looking, looking forward to getting back under-
They're anxious to get home.
Back under the roof, so, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Great, thanks for coming in. I appreciate it.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the tax classification hearing, and I'd like to invite Rick Nowlan to the table. Rick is our Director of Assessing, and this is an, Rick, we see you once a year around this time, and perhaps before you start with the recommendation for the Board, perhaps for the benefit of the audience, if you could give a little context to what brings you into this meeting tonight, and the annual, the annual activity that we have.
Sure. Yeah. We have final approval from the state for our 2018 certification of values, so, once that is completed, then we bring it to the Board of Selectmen. They have to make the decision whether they're going to have one tax rate or split the tax rate. I'll just run a general, some general information on it. The split rate does not change the tax, the total levy of the town, it doesn't increase the revenue for the town, and it does not determine the tax rate for the town. In fiscal 2014, the Selectmen formed a special committee to review the split rate situation. In committees and in open forum, the committee reviewed and analyzed the split rate situation. The committee recommended at that time that the percentage of the residential and commercial would need to change dramatically to consider a split rate. We had approximately 11.3% commercial and industrial at that point. We are currently at approximately 11.5% commercial industrial, with an additional 1.7% personal property. This ratio, ratio has remained approximately the same for the past several years. Commercial industrial parcels make up less than 5% of the total parcels in the town. Looking at Hingham's taxes in comparison to some area towns with a split rate using fiscal '17 rates, Hingham at, for example, a $750,000 assessment, the taxes are $9,188. In Quincy, for a $750,000 residential, they're $10,628. The commercial would be $21,533. In Stoughton, for a $750,000 value, it'd be $10,868 for the residential, $19,343 for the commercial. As one can see, a split rate does not necessarily mean lower taxes for the residential taxpayer. It could drastically affect some commercial players, especially small business person who is prevalent in Hingham. The greater issue is that property values, we know, are higher than average to many towns. This is due to the popularity of the town. The Board of Assessors reviewed the split rate situation. The Board unanimously voted to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to keep a single rate for fiscal 2018.
Questions, Pollard, Karen?
I have none, although I do want to thank you for the assistance that you rendered to the South Hingham Study Group. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
You know, and I think, as you've implied, Rick, you know, we're very supportive and protective, I think, of our commercial residents here in Hingham, and, you know, I appreciate the earlier work, the 2014 group, because it's important to ask the tough questions around the split tax rate, but, you know, as you suggest, this sort of very minor bump doesn't really change the overall analysis, so I appreciate that work.
I've remembered, Rick, that in past years, you've given us, you know, examples that, you know, to make a meaningful reduction in the residential property tax rate would result in a really significant increase on the commercial side, and I think that the subject that we're about to discuss, and the South Hingham Study Group and things, it's timely that you're coming in this evening, but clearly alleviating the residential tax burden would be on the backs of the commercial business to a degree that would just be, that wouldn't be sustainable. But like Karen, I, you know, I'm glad that we go through, go through that analysis every year. I would also say that, you know, when you get your tax bill in the mail, and, you know, you look at that number, and I'm always thinking, wow, that's, that's a pretty big number. When I, when I'm made aware of the tax rates in some of the neighboring communities, I'm reminded that while our taxes are high, and I'll be the first to say it's a lot of money that we're paying, I think relative to other communities, the value of the services that we're getting for those tax dollars is, is really exceptional. So are there any questions from the audience on, on the tax classification? Okay. The way this votes is that if we want to continue to tax all classes of property at a single rate, we will vote that the residential factor be set at one. That's kind of a vote that's not, not always, like, super intuitive. So I would make a motion that the residential factor be set at one. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rick, thank you so much.
Thanks, Rick.
As I said, it's, I think that this is, this is helpful, this is a subject that's helpful, because we are going to hear from the South, the South Hingham Working Group, which is a group that has been working for over three years on a number of issues related to South Hingham. The group has put together a very comprehensive report. We're going to put this report on the website tomorrow morning, so anybody who's interested in getting a copy, it will be, it will be available. Judy, are, who's, who's coming up to? Great, please come on up to the table, and, while a lot of you are familiar, are familiar to many people, if, if you wouldn't mind making introductions for everybody that's here, we'd appreciate it. And Judy, just as folks are getting settled, you have a presentation that you want to walk through first.
We have four slides, yeah.
Okay. I think what we'll just do, I know there are members of the audience here, so I think there may be people who are interested in this subject. What I might ask is that we let, we let the working group walk through the few slides that they've prepared. I think at that point, we'd open it up to questions from the Board, and then questions from the public. We've allotted 45 minutes in all for the entire discussion. We are going to have to have a hard stop, but we will also be mindful that some of you have come for this purpose, so we will make sure that there's ample time to hear from the people who came out this evening.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks.
I am Judy Sneeth. I live at 89 North Street in Hingham, and I'm the Chair of the South Hingham Study Group. Sue Sullivan, Emily Wentworth, zoning administrator for the town and assistant planner, and Jerry Sealan are here with me. Our group also consisted of Todd McGrath, who was formerly on the zoning board, Dick Cook, also formerly planning and zoning and traffic engineer, Mark Lucas, who lives in the study, near the study area, Jerry Sealan, an architect, and then Paul Healy and I. This working group was created by the Board of Selectmen in late 2013, as the real estate market was rebounding, and was a result of a series of town meeting actions, really that I think started most recently in 1991, with the creation of the South Hingham Development Overlay District, and that's a district that's designated in our zoning bylaw. Through that, and then a series of other actions at town meeting, the town voiced its desire for high-quality, low-impact growth with the potential for long-term tax revenue. Our group was taxed, was tasked with identifying key opportunities and challenges related to future economic development. We were on a fact-finding mission. The town has a lot of different boards and committees that are involved in different aspects of land use at different levels, and what we were to do was to become a central repository for information, and, and to bring up what the potential was for development in the area. I have to say, we had a great group of seven people. We had an unbelievable staff member in Emily Wentworth, but none of our discussions would have been possible without really the active participation of so many people. The area landowners were consistently there, Bill Hamilton from the Derby Street Shops, Buzz Constable from A.W. Perry, and Gabe Crocker, representing the Bristol Brothers, are three that I remember right now, residential property owners like Judy Kelly and Edna English, who are here tonight, because they have not missed a meeting in four years. We really all attribute the richness of our conversation to their participation. Over those four years, we heard from all the town land use committees, utility providers, community organizations, and state and municipal agencies, and collected information, which has, over the years, been put onto our website by Emily Wentworth, believe it or not, our study group has its own page. And I really encourage everyone watching this or listening to try to read this report, and to access the information that you're interested in, because there is just a wealth of information on our website as of tomorrow morning, including the report. So what, what did we study? You might, you might be wondering. So here's a map of the area, if I knew which button to push. So this is about 900 acres of land. You might be familiar with Route 3 and Derby Street, kind of to the upper side of that slide, and then Sharp Street, Abington Street, down in that bottom left-hand corner. The majority of the land is the, what was the industrial park in purple, the pink is Office Park, that's where the quarry is, and the Bristol, what we call the Bristol property, and then across the street from that is the Derby Street, the Derby Street Shops. So this is the area that we looked at. Currently, there is 3.3 million square foot, feet of development in that area, which is only a third of what is actually allowed by zoning. So there is great potential for economic development in this area, and that is what we set out to figure out, was what was that potential, and what were the obstacles or challenges to that, to that growth. So I wanted to start our presentation, in the interest of time, with our recommendations. So our first recommendation, I've already said, is please, please use this report and the accompanying information as a guidepost, and as a resource to unite town boards and commissions in development conversation. This is a body of knowledge accumulated over four years, and, and it's really worthwhile. We saw this process as really vital to any kind of significant development proposal coming into the town, to get the town ready to respond. We would also see this similar type of process as really being a great one to engage in for any kind of infrastructure improvement project that the town would undergo in the future. Our second recommendation is to keep an open mind and continue conversations with the developers. Our zoning bylaw allows for industrial and office park uses here. The market is changing, jobs are changing, industries are changing, demographics are changing. We think the town should be ready to change also, and not, and not be limited by what the uses are in the zoning bylaw, but to be responsive to what property owners feel the market supports. Again, keeping in mind all of the, the values of the town, for what the town wants to have in its town. And then third, the biggest challenge for all of the areas that we spoke about was financing. How, if we needed new wastewater treatment, if we needed new water sources, where was the money going to come from? And how, in such a large-scale area, does a town raise those funds in, in a public-private partnership? So our third recommendation is that we really look at that first, is what are, what are the options? There are technical assistance grants from Mass Development available, Emily will talk about in a bit. We have an improvement fund in our bylaw right now, in that overlay district we talked about. It's never been used. Is that the right mechanism? We should look at that. And then I, from what I understand, the HDIC will be doing this third one, but is to research other town success stories. So when different large-scale developments, like in Dedham and in Wellesley, happened, how, what came first? Did they raise the money first and then build, or did they get the property owners involved? And so we'd really like to, to know more about that. So these are our recommendations. The biggest thing that we learned here is that there are a lot of challenges, which everybody knew. So we got into a lot of depth in each- So we got into a lot of depth in each of several areas, mostly infrastructure. And Sue and I are just going to go over some of the key findings, as far as challenges and opportunities go, and then we will allow time for questions, because I think that we can then talk more specifically about what you're interested in hearing about. So Sue?
So I'm going to start off with economic development, and just the opportunities and challenges of that area and all. And interestingly, you know, some of it is pretty intuitive. We're a desirable community, okay, for both businesses and people coming in to live, residents and all. And we have a business-friendly climate in town, which, which has been a proven thing. And also, we have in that area significant vacant and underdeveloped land parcels. So those are all the opportunities. On the opposite side of that, there are significant infrastructure improvements that are necessary in order to, in the study area, in order to, to support any new development projects. The challenge is finding the projects that are large enough to, large enough in scale to support the cost of the infrastructure improvements, while at the same time, not negatively impacting the neighborhoods surrounding the area. So it's, it's a very, it's, it's, you know, you've, it's, it's, it's an important consideration all the way around. There's also a lot of regional competition for these economic development projects, and also for the funding programs that, that could fund infrastructure improvements in the area. So-
Roadways being one of them, and we'll talk about that in a minute. And the public services are really the foundation of life in any community. That's emergency services, schools, public works, and utilities. The good news on the public services side is that we have a lot of electricity in town, and we feel like there's capacity in the Hobart Street substation for any number of development projects in this area. On the, because this is a commercial area, most of the public services are not constrained by growth, except for police and fire, which is a real, the needs of any kind of significant development, like another Linden Ponds-type retirement community, or another Derby Street Shops retail community, would put increased pressure on emergency medical response and on police patrols. So our, you know, sense is that any kind of large-scale development moving forward would have to be done in conjunction with public safety officials.
Right. Which leads us then to, one of, one of our, our biggest issues, and one of the things we probably spent the most time on was transportation and traffic and all in that area. And, and the opportunity side, you know, there's a state-funded Derby Street reconstruction project right now, and the Whiting and Derby Street intersection improvements and all, which will be completed in 2018. And that'll alleviate the current level of service and safety issues. That's, that's what that's designed to do. And completion of the Derby Street corridor improvements is designed such that there could be future development that could allow for up to 13,000 more vehicle trips a day in the area, but no more than that. Okay? And then the third thing is, as an opportunity, if a southern connection through the industri, through South Shore Park to Route 3 could be created in the future, it could alleviate up to 35% of new development traffic in the area. Okay? So that's all on the opportunity side. Now, on the challenges side, okay? Any new development that, that generates more than 13,000 vehicle trips a day is going to seriously cause issues along the entire corridor. Okay? And on the connecting streets and all around it. So the challenge for the, for the regulatory boards and all is going to be that you have to look at, don't let that next project take all 13,000-
Vehicle trips.
Vehicle trips. You know, so there's nothing for the next. Or how do you mitigate all of this? How, how do you work to increase? Now, you could say, we can increase lanes on Derby Street Corridor, or we could rebuild the Route 3 bridge. But again, you've got constraints there in terms of physical and property right issues, you know, you don't know. And also, does that increase affect the surrounding neighborhoods? You know, there's not a culture of walkability or bicycling or public transportation in that area. You know, there's not a, a real mechanisms for any, any of that. So you really have to, I mean, this is, this is going to be the major, the major issue, not the major issue, but one of the, the largest issues going forward.
There are really three major issues going forward.
Yes, I-
And I don't think this comes as a surprise to anybody. Transportation being the first, and water being the second. The real challenge with water is that we are already at 90% or more, depending on which numbers you look at, of the water that's available to the town. The, there are projects in the pipeline that take up about 40% of that available water, so it's really significantly less than what it looks like, unless we come up with new water sources. Additionally, the town doesn't really have control over those water supply decisions, as I'm sure this board is acutely aware. And there are significant costs associated with improving the infrastructure for a significant development in this area. Water flow pressure, water pressure, would need to be improved for fire mitigation, and there are some other infrastructure costs. On the other hand, the Water Supply Committee and Aquarian were both very forthcoming in our conversations with them. We got a lot of good information from them, and we identified three or four, which I'm sure they-
Four.
Four. Potential sources of water that could be used in this area. So, so there is promise here, and we have this blank slate, so we have the opportunity to work with developers to create a modern, water-efficient delivery system in that area. So we actually wrapped up our water section of challenges and opportunities really on a, on a positive note, despite really being at the cap right now of, of water supply.
And since we're talking about water, we might now talk about wastewater alternatives, which is the third major caveat. You know, there are, you know, on the opportunity side, you know, there are, you know, three options. We have onsite septic systems, which, you know, involve private ownership and somewhat cost-effective. We have decentralized sewer systems, which are encouraging to business growth and development, eliminates MWRA mitigation and connection costs and that sort of thing, and it recharges the water supply in the watershed. And, and the third one is the centralized sewer system, which has a high potential for treatment capacity. It's got relatively low, long-term maintenance costs, and you don't have to purchase valuable uplands. You know, so they've all got opportunities, but the challenges are really, all of them are relatively expensive. The need for additional alternatives is a potential impediment to any significant development, because it's got to be dealt with. There's got to be additional, you know, wastewater facility for any new, real new development that comes in, and, and, and it's costly. And so, so for any development or redevelopment, we need to figure that out. And Emily's going to talk a little bit to that in a minute. One of the things we did do, as I come to the conclusion, to the end of the five, the five areas, is Jerry had put together for us hypothetical development scenarios, and they, and they're in the report, and they range from an increase in square footage of-
Eighteen.
Eighteen percent to an increase of 200%. And this isn't even, this doesn't even max out the zoning that's allowed down there. Okay? This just, and when you look at, and delve into each of these scenarios, and Jerry can answer questions you have on that and all, it, there are significant challenges that we really need to cover. Now, most of them, many of them are financial, and many of them are quality of life. And Emily is now going to talk to, talk, talk to you about, from the staff perspective, and going forward-
Back to our-
Back to our-
Back to our recommendations.
Yeah, hopefully without redundancies. The first recommendation, to use this report as a guidepost and resource to unite town offices and development conversations. I think this report will be helpful to the community planning office. As you may know, most of the senior staff in the department is relatively new in Hingham terms. We've been there for, you know, in general, less than five years. So collecting the wealth of information that the town has and relates to development in South Hingham in one central location, so that we have sort of a Cliff Notes version of what's important out there, will be really handy for us. Specifically, we hope that the report will enable us to review projects more holistically, so we're not going to look just simply through the narrow lens of, say, zoning compliance or conservation impacts. It will help us make reasonable assumptions about potential project impacts on the community, and make recommendations as to how those impacts can be mitigated, so that future development maintains or enhances quality of life. So that's when we review individual project proposals. But more generally, we hope that the report will help us better understand infrastructure needs in particular, and plan appropriately to ensure that future development can be adequately supported. In terms of, you know, the report, it's, it's a snapshot in time. We recognize that the South Hingham Study Group's efforts have wrapped up, but that there's certainly more work that can be done here. So building on this, this report, as Judy had mentioned, there's this Mass Development Grant, an opportunity that was recently released for technical assistance that could provide the town with real estate services to complete, for instance, market feasibility and financial analysis of the area. You know, the work that Jerry did pulled together an initial investigation of the likely impacts of a number of different hypothetical development scenarios, but it would be helpful to complete a more detailed cost-benefit analysis with professional support. And it, we hope that that type of project might help us better understand the market forces that influence South Hingham, so that we better understand what type of development we're likely to see there. And I think that will help us, in addition, with the, the second recommendation about keeping an open mind to developers' proposals. So if we're interested in pursuing that opportunity, the deadline's a little more than a month away, December 15th.
So, we'd love to answer any kinds of questions anybody has in any-
Sure.
... directions, but again, encourage everyone to kind of get their arms around this information and participate.
Before asking Paul or Karen for questions or comments, I just want to thank all of you and the rest of the group who's not at the table for this great work, which is going to be so helpful, and in particular, the way you're framing some of these things up is, is making it, it's making it easy to sort of, you know, digest it and understand it, and I think that that will only enhance its utility as we move forward. Paul?
I'd just like to thank all of you very much. It's-
I'd like to thank all of you very much. It was a real pleasure to work with each one of you, and for many of you, it was a double-duty assignment, meaning you, you had to do other town rolls as well as this one. But ladies and gentlemen, the, the attendance at these 30-plus public meetings that we had over a period of four years was, almost without exception, everybody showed up. Emily's work was superb, and frankly, kept the train on the tracks. Thank you so much for that, Emily. I'd like to recognize that the stakeholders at Derby Shops, Bristol, Perry, made significant contribution towards the traffic analysis costs that we did on the project. And frankly, it extended beyond Derby Street and swept in Cushing and Gardena Street for purposes of a more complete consideration of some of the issues. And just thank you to everybody who showed up. Ms. English and Ms. Kelly were always there, which was good, got the neighborhood view. There's a lot here, you know, I, I was reading it myself today and said, wow, this, this was, this was quite the workout. But Judy nailed it, as did Sue. This is, you know, when I sat on the planning board, you know, I knew pretty much what the planning board did, but some of the other issues that I didn't really speak to was like, well, how does that all fit in? So this is a great working tool, I think, for the permitting boards, as well as the Board of Selectmen, to read through-
Right, right.
-and really understand the challenges that we're facing up there. You know, and I think acutely with respect to the water. You know, two gentlemen here from the water company, they were both in attendance at the meeting, and Mr. Rollson participated to make this the kind of report that I think will give credibility to those that choose to read it and reflect upon what it says. Deliberately didn't stake out positions, because we're here to provide facts and consequences of choices that are made on those facts. I think we've done that, and, you know, I think that this will be of benefit and good use for years to come up in South Hingham. So thank you. Thank you all so much for your time and your effort in making this a reality.
Thank you. Karen?
Well, Paul kept promising that we were going to see this just amazing report-
Here it is.
And the more he talked about it, the more I thought, well, it can't be that amazing. And he, he delivered and then some. This is really, really outstanding work, overall, long haul, it sounds like. And I particularly appreciate the community involvement that you noted in your, in your meetings, because this is, this, this is about the community in South Hingham, and is, as you noted, a series of facts and decision trees that will move forward with, with consequences for the town as a whole, but that neighborhood in particular, so I appreciate that. I, sort of, two quick questions, and then really need to, to sit down with a big cup of coffee and go through it. But Sue, you mentioned, is it, is it as currently structured, we can take 13,000 additional trips in that area, or would there be additional improvements that need to be made in order to accommodate those 13,000 trips?
Now, with the reconstruction of the Derby Street Corridor that's going on now-
Okay.
-that's currently going on, according to the study by Van Assen Associates, that would be the, to keep the level of service, you know, not impair the level of service and all, and safety, that that would be the number.
The max, okay, with that improvement in place.
That's the max.
Okay. And then Judy, you were noting that the majority of that area you showed on the map is zoned, commercial, industrial, but we should be open to other uses. So you're thinking sort of mixed residential, is that what the, those would be, be some possibilities, and those would require changes in the zoning bylaw?
Require changes in the zoning.
Okay, okay.
If Amazon came to-
What'd you say?
This is Sue's, what if Amazon came to Union Point?
You just never know.
You never know.
Never know.
You never know, no.
It could be a parking lot, you know, an airstrip. I don't, I don't know.
Right.
That would change things dramatically in this area. But we have information that would help us decide how to respond.
Right, right. Well, again, I-
Interesting, Jerry's, Jerry's development scenarios-
Yeah.
Were really, if you look at those, you can see, and that's where I think you see a lot of the flexibility that we're, we're recommending, is each of those scenarios shows a different amount of, Jerry, you can speak better to-
They do, and I think the district, the district does allow quite a bit of variety of commercial types of developments, and I think the one significant element that we included was the potential for multifamily housing.
Yep.
And we did that for a couple of reasons. You may recall MAPC came in, Mass Area Planning Council, and helped, helped the town kind of begin to draft an updated master plan, and-
to draft an updated master plan. And I think they also developed, as I recall, three kind of potential development scenarios for this part of Hingham. And integral with their recommendations was multifamily housing. So when Todd McGrath and I started to kind of build on that and try to go a couple of steps further, we took that to heart and we said, well, you know, if you look at some of the recent kind of mixed-use developments out there, particularly in Westwood, which seems to be, you know, a model that's having some success, they all like to include a certain amount of multifamily. So, you know, without recommending that we change the bylaw or anything, we just said, well, let's show it. Let's try to understand how the inclusion of these things might affect the opportunities and the challenges. And, you know, that gets left to town meeting to decide ultimately if it's worthwhile. But if developers come in and make a convincing case that to do a large development, they really want to include that, then, you know, we should at least know what the impacts might be.
Well, and I think it showed the utility of the report frankly as a planning tool, because it, you know, for people way more creative than I am, you know, like you're saying, you look at this blank slate and you can posit certain uses. And, you know, I think the utility of the report then gives you the ramifications of some of those uses. So I'm anxious to read it in full.
You know, interestingly enough, in none of the development scenarios that we developed, did multifamily housing take on a major component? It was a piece of a project, but it never, in our opinion, was something that was overwhelming or exclusively multifamily. It was really more of a component of mixed use. And as I recall, that was really the only element that isn't currently allowed by the bylaw in terms of use.
Well, and it does seem like in other areas of the country anyway, and I think in Westwood as well, a component of like that Derby Street shop look now includes a residential component. So, anyway, well, thank you.
I'm just going to add two things. One is that as I look at that area, I'm pleased that Hingham has achieved safe harbor status for 40B developments, because I think what that means is that, you know, one of the reasons that we took some difficult votes last year was to allow the town to control its zoning throughout all of Hingham. And as we look at that South Hingham corridor, it's particularly significant when you look at how much available land is there. I would also just remind people kind of why, you know, why we're kind of looking at this. And as someone who has lived in South Hingham for almost 17 years, I will say personally, you know, I find myself conflicted about it in some different ways. You know, as we look at the town, and we're going to be starting the budget process pretty soon, and last night, the school committee unveiled a five-year kind of financial plan of things that they're looking to do to maintain the excellent school system we have, and it all costs money. And we have a lot of people in this town who say, I like nice services, I like nice stuff, and I'd like to keep my taxes low. And kind of pick any two, as I like to say. And how we balance all that is really hard, because, and we have a population, as you've pointed out, that is aging. And what that means, and we have young families coming to Hingham, and there are many people who don't have the capacity to swallow big tax increases, where 2.5% is a big leap in some years. And so as we look at what we want to do as a town and the services we want to offer, we find ourselves saying that just kind of keeping the engine going is hard to do under that Proposition 2.5 cap. And as you heard this board a couple of weeks ago, when we talked about budget assumptions, we said, no override, we're not using the unused levy capacity. We wanted to take a position on that at the beginning of the budget to make it very clear that we were going to live with the revenue we had. But we have a long-term issue, which is that, you know, over time, how do we do that? And that's where South Hingham comes into play, because it has the opportunity to be developed. And that could bring some relief to the residential tax base. But we got to do it right. We got to do it, we got to balance it. There are neighborhoods around there, there are big impacts, these developments cost a lot of money. If you build it, will they come? There's a lot of competition, as your report cites. So as we're figuring all this out, I would just remind us as to why some of this work originated and echo my colleagues' thanks for providing information and a blueprint that'll help us, we have those conversations. There's a lot at stake financially, quality of life, infrastructure. And I'm a big believer that if we all have a common set of facts, that the conversations we have about alternatives are just a lot richer. So again, thank you. At this point, I would open it up if there's anyone in the public who has a question for the group or who wants to make a comment about the work. Yes, please. Jim, could you come up to the? And again, we're going to have this on our website tomorrow, so we will, for folks who want to read it.
Or just the section. Just learn about water one day and sewer the next.
That's the way I'm going to go after it, yeah.
Hi, Jim.
Jim Watson, 291 Rockland Street. I've had a copy for over 45 minutes, so I've got very soon.
You got a bootleg copy.
I know a bootlegger, right. And I'm very impressed, you know, with what's been accomplished with its purposes to be a guidepost, you know, a survey of the real situation now. I wish, small point, was that the summary in the front was more of a summary of these high points. You know, it's an introduction. But I mean, granted, it's a modest-length report, so people should read the whole thing. I've written summaries that were that long, so I know what you mean. Second thing, I think you make a good point on wastewater, that the decentralized system recharges locally. And it's made in a couple of places, but it's a point I think that needs to be made in that, you know, future work should look at not just the water needs, a potential development in the area, but the effects of activities in the area on the town's water supply. Because many people point out that the Weir Basin is considered to be quite stressed. Well, the answer to part of that, is that the use of this water is recharging more and recharging at the head of the basin, namely South Hingham, as much as possible. And you do mention that in passing as a characteristic of a decentralized system. I think it should be mentioned a little more strongly that the centralized is the MWR A, which means you take water out of the ground and ship it to the ocean, which we know, but people forget that.
Thank you.
So I think those, if there's further work, and also looking a little more at the Rockland Supply, because that's free of inter-basin transfer issues, I think. And they have a lot of it, and they haven't been able to use it all. And then the other half of the coin is recharging stormwater, which, there's a lot of talk in the literature about low-impact design. And all the planners and landscape architects talk about it, and almost no one does it. You look at any new parking lot in the town all around, and it's conventional, curbs, planting above ground, paving, storm drains into the stream. You know, it's amazing what a delay there is between what everybody knows and what nobody, very few people do. So I would just suggest, and I'm not familiar enough with the rules and regulations that apply, but going a little further in strongly, strongly emphasizing that whatever is built, recharge as much as possible. And if there are any major retrofits, that they go to porous pavement and soils and so forth. I was talking to Bud Constance a while ago, and he said, you know, in our projects, we've done that, but then the project next door won't bother. And that's where I think we need to really say, wait a minute, guys, whatever happened, this is our chance to save some of our water that we're flushing away.
That's a great idea.
Thank you, and thank you for a great job.
Thank you.
Sorry to have missed 34 meetings. It was, I kept hearing about it and kept thinking if you'd go to those.
But that's a potential zoning bylaw.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But anyway.
Well, you know, you think about a lot of our community preservation purchases, particularly in the South Hingham area, and one of the compelling reasons to, for example, the Lainer parcel, and there was another parcel, I think it was off Scott...
Recreation Park Drive.
Right, was to, you know, because of the aquifer and, yeah. Anyone else?
Mary, I forgot something.
Yes.
Just that, I realize the purpose of it isn't to make final recommendations, it's to say, where are we? But it gets a little confusing, because there are lots of goals and objectives and recommendations from previous reports quoted very favorably. And in a way, a lot of them are implicitly recommended. And I think it might be good at the end to gather them together. And I'm not sure how you say that, because there are things which aren't recommendations that came up with you, but there are things that you've put in the text in various places. And it might be good if you could organize sort of a spectrum of included recommendations that you strongly support, things to be looked at, or just acknowledging, something of that sort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you again for all those...
There will be a test.
Mary, if I could just say one last thing.
Please, Sue.
It's a guidepost for our own departments, but thinking about too, it's a real guidepost for the developers too that are coming in to us, because they know what our challenges are. And if there's, if the answer to a trafficking is a roadway through South Shore Park and all too, I mean, it gives them also a very clear understanding of where we're coming from when we start out, so.
Thank you, that's a great point.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jerry. Thanks, ladies.
We have two votes to make. These are contracts with Public Works, because winter is coming. So these are for salt materials.
I move that we sign a contract with Easton Minerals, Inc., to sell and deliver to the Department of Public Works CC/Solar Salt, delivered at $45.20 per ton, or treated salt delivered for $62.20 per ton.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I move that we sign a contract with Mid-Atlantic Salt to sell and deliver to the Department of Public Works CC/Solar Salt, delivered at $51.44 per ton, or treated salt delivered for $63.30 per ton.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Town administrator reports, Tom?
Nothing today.
Okay. Paul?
Met with the Hingham Historical Commission last night along with the town historian, and we're going to take up that initiative with respect to the preservation awards for the houses. So we're going to work through that, and hopefully we'll have something concrete soon.
Excellent.
Fantastic. Just like to say, busy fall, busy fall for all of us, but in particular, our students and student athletes at the high school. So the fall season's concluding for dance, cross-country, field hockey, football, boys' soccer, volleyball, golf, and crew. You notice I didn't say girls' soccer, because we're still fighting away on that front. So congratulations to you. Big combined band, orchestra, and chorus concert that was just fabulous, from what I understand. And last but not least, the theater group is taking on the production of Chicago, which shows you, I think, the caliber of the actors and actresses we have at the high school. So take that one in. Mary and I got to attend a 100th birthday party for Phyllis Chapman last week, week or so ago. It was fabulous. If I could come close to being as fit and as able as Phyllis Chapman is when I'm 75, I will be doing well, I think. I was the moderator of the third grade spelling bee. I attended the Historical Society Volunteer Appreciation Brunch, and that was at the Heritage Museum. It's always a treat to go into that room and go into that building. And not only were the volunteers there, the folks that have really taken upon themselves to preserve and educate us about our historic legacy, but there are many people that volunteer in numerous aspects in town. So it was a great gathering. And rounding out the fun and games was my, was attending the crew ergathon at the shipyard. I did do one bit of work, and that was I went to a meeting in Boston with Tim White from the Affordable Housing Trust to continue conversations with DHCD around the inclusion of affordable housing units on our inventory. So, you know, we continue to be mindful, notwithstanding the fact that we've achieved our 10%, I think we need to be vigilant, as we all know, and continue to plan for the future with regard to that. That's it.
Great. I have a couple of things. I met with the Advisory Committee Working Group that is looking at the question of long-term financing of big capital projects. We all know there are a lot of major capital projects we're looking at, public safety, town hall, potentially something at the library, potentially foster school. And, you know, the question in our mind is, how do we pay for all this? What's the impact on the taxpayers? And the advisory committee has put together a working group that is helping us get information to help inform those questions. So they will be in on our next meeting, November 21st. This Saturday is our Veterans Day celebration here in Sanborn Auditorium at 11 o'clock. That is always wonderful. And in advance, I would like to thank our VSO Keith German, Lisa Potts, and the Veterans Council for what is always just a very special day. The other thing I just want to briefly mention, and we're going to take it up on the 21st, but the question of marijuana establishments has been taking up a lot of our bandwidth. And actually, the planning board has a hearing tonight. And Tom and I have met with Mary Savage Dunham and with Jen Gay Smith, who's the chair of the planning board, with help from council, to start looking at all the different facets of this very complicated issue. And at Jen's request, I gave her a statement from me this evening, and it really just speaks to process. So I'm just going to read it. I was mindful of just kind of outlining a process. And there's a little bit, and as you heard Mrs. Salisbury mentioning, you know, there's this question of, you know, a community could perhaps adopt a ban on establishments. Well, the planning board also would be tasked with regulating. So how do you kind of synchronize all these different activities? And how do you identify the many, many touchpoints that this has? You know, it's everything from the farmer's market to taxation to consumption. So where we are, just, you know, there was a ballot question last November, and the state, our state legislature's amended it this past July. Now, people may recall that in spring, at the 2007 Annual Town Meeting, Hingham adopted a one-year moratorium, and that was pretty much to say, let's give ourselves a year and wait and see what happens, particularly with respect to state regulations. That moratorium's in place, that moratorium is in place until June 30th of 2018. Now, over the past several weeks, the state has started to come out with information. And what we're learning is that we as a community, and every community has to do this, we have to ask ourselves some questions. Do we want these establishments to operate in Hingham, first and foremost? And then secondly, if we do want them to operate in Hingham, how are they regulated? There is an opportunity for communities to charge a sales tax. There is a question of, should we as a town allow consumption in public buildings? And over the last couple of weeks, Tom and Mary and Jen and I have been looking to say, what's the scope, what's the timing, what are the options, and what are the roles that our respective boards play? And I think in general, what we've talked about is that this board is going to take the lead on the policy decisions. Do we want to ask town meeting if they want to ban the establishments? Questions of taxation and consumption, and that the planning board would take the lead on the zoning questions, which is really, which is their purview. Now, you know, while I'm kind of mindful that, you know, we could have a circumstance where the planning board is spending a lot of time and effort putting together anywhere from, you know, five to 10 zoning articles, depending on whether town meeting says yes or no to the overarching question, all that work may not be necessary. And so we've been working with council's help to try to understand how to best sequence this. And right now, where I'm sort of at, based on what we know right now, are that we know that zoning articles for the spring town meeting are due December 1st. We have to hit that window. In my opinion, if we are going to ask the town whether or not they want to ban these establishments, I think some people would want to know how they would be regulated. I think that could inform some people's decisions. I watched the planning board hearing last week, and it struck me that of the people in the room, people, my impression was that people walked in with their minds made up. Some were in favor, some were opposed, but I think that there are potentially citizens who would say, well, before I answer yes or no, I want to know how you want to regulate it. So I feel like that will inform the decision. So I feel like that will inform the decision. I also think that we need to be prepared, as Mrs. Salisbury said, that if town meeting were to vote to allow these establishments, we would want to have some regulations ready for town meeting's consideration. Because if they were allowed in Hingham and we didn't have those regulations, applications could be made and we would be trying to play catch-up. And I don't think we're that kind of community. We like to be kind of planful. So with that in mind, I've suggested to Tom that on November 21st, that we take up the question of whether this board should put forward a warrant article for town meeting's consideration, whether or not to impose a ban. Not necessarily how we feel about it, but procedurally, would we want to do that? And so I've asked that we, you know, start to take that up on the 21st. So we're going to kind of start through a process. We would have until June, until January 20th to submit those warrant articles, but I would also say, and again, we heard a comment in the public comment this evening, that if this board were not to put something like that forward, my guess is there might be some citizens who would want to put a petition article forward. And I believe the board owes the citizens the courtesy of our decision so that if a citizen petition article wanted to be submitted, folks would have time.
Okay.
So we're going to kind of start down the process route, and I would encourage us all to watch the planning board hearings.
I did watch it.
Great. I think that will continue to inform. And, you know, what I would say is that the respective boards that have purview on this, we've talked about sharing information, sharing input, coordinating efforts. And, you know, as we start to march through this issue, we're very interested in hearing from people in the community and have already started to hear from people and are very much appreciative of that. So anyway, that's where I think we're kind of headed procedurally on this.
Okay.
Yeah.
So were you going to read a statement or no?
Well, you know, I just kind of, I think I covered off what was in it. And so with that, the board is actually going to enter into executive session, so...
Can I give one more shout-out?
Oh, please.
Actually, I have two. One shout-out is with the storm that happened last, this past week, I just have to give a shout-out to DPW Police, Fire, and the Light Plan employees. I mean, it was remarkable, the ground they covered and the amount of work they did in a short period of time. And last but not least, Paul Healy and I were at the Welcome Home for James Appolito, another just tremendous night in Hingham to come out and welcome James Appolito home. So that's, then I'll stop.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Excellent. Good night. Our next board meeting will be two weeks from tonight, which is November 21st. With that, I recommend the board enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to the town's litigation with Aquarian Water Company of Massachusetts, Inc., and Aquarian Water Capital of Massachusetts, Inc. Since discussion and open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, we will not be reconvening an open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Roll call, vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Thanks for coming.